I don't know what, this is set up over here. I don't know what's going on. They did it earlier in our history presentation. It was set up over here and this one on the other side was all again. And it worked over there, so maybe.
Fingers crossed.
Of course, you know, it may work for everybody until we get here. Like Murphy's Law.
Oh yeah. Technology. The wind's blowing outside, so you know.
I'm telling you. We are live streaming now, so yikes.
Now, are we still having the paper street thing this Thursday?
No, it's next, it's the week of the council meeting, which will be the 27th.
Okay, okay, okay.
Our council meeting, I think, is the 24th and it's that Thursday.
Okay, awesome.
Reason being.
I know you were looking at everybody's schedule.
Yeah.
And everything out. And next week wasn't gonna be good because next week's Wednesday.
Exactly. And so everybody kind of agreed on the Thursday. And so I posted that Monday.
Okay.
In that way.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's all holding good, right? Yeah, yes. Well, gosh, we love it some of the time to get down there and visit, you know, again, hopefully. And, and we all have the opportunity to come this way. And there, yeah. Just let us know, okay? Yes. Yeah, I'm sure you have. It's probably been longer than that, one of them either. That's what's gonna happen. Yes. Well, I'm glad that you're ladies mostly well, it's all there. If you need anything, please just give me a call or give me a text, okay? And, you know, and just keep in touch and we will do the same. Okay, all right. You take care, God bless. Mine is, mine is best, I mean, yeah. Yeah. God bless.
Was it Jackie you got to see?
No, that was a good friend of mine.
Oh, okay.
Who I work with in hospice.
Okay.
At one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And she was an immigrant from Hungary and, and.
Oh.
Here.
Okay.
United States and I was there when she received this.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah. Very good.
Oh, yeah.
Her name is, she's from Hungary and her husband is foreign.
Oh, awesome. That is awesome. Yeah, we keep in touch with Chrissy. Yeah, we keep in touch with Chrissy and them over there in Hawaii and it's like, oh, you're up in the.
They are over in the Waikele area.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Oh, trouble's in the house, we gotta leave now.
So.
Hey. So. Last stream is on.
I think it runs on a, I didn't set the program, but sometimes I get caught in here and I look over there and I'm thinking, how are we doing this thing? And so it starts at seventy two. And it's perfect. I don't have to.
Cause it's Grand Brother Rabbit, I don't guess.
I know. It is.
Yeah, news.
We have last stream on all days, so we just. You're on camera. You're on camera.
I'm always on camera.
Oh, yeah.
Been running?
Trying to get some shredding done. I nearly got close to shredding today. By the time we serviced the tractor and went and got the shredder and so instead, it's time to come over here. Had to make me, make me some liquid IV. Pretty good stuff. Try to drink one in the morning before I get started. Didn't happen today. Hello, Scott.
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
There's no minute like the last minute.
I didn't eat you by much.
Yeah, I, well. I was glad seeing you walking that way when I was walking, it was getting five bucks, I was like. Sucks getting old. I couldn't see him, I didn't have him up. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that. All right. Everybody, you ready? All right. So we're gonna call this meeting.
Excuse your use.
Wow.
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 That sounded like a little bit like a voice of God.
I know. He is watching. So now we're gonna. Now we're gonna open the meeting at 5:02. Okay, so first thing is roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Uh, District Two, Paul Carey and District Three, Phil King are not here.
District Four, Todd Sherhart.
District Five, Chris Dyer.
And Darren Schroder, Mayor. All right, if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Pastor Knippa.
And thank you so much, even though it was a short invitation for being here tonight and I am available anytime as long as you give me an hour, okay? Every time. Or, or, or more for that. Now, I will be here every, each and every time and God's gracious blessings for each and every one of you. Let's pray. Gracious Heavenly Father, these are such trying times that we live in, in this day. Lord, and, um, Lord, we just pray above all that we push all of our trust in you for everything, including the, how we run this city, including how each and every individual of this city carries themselves and, um, and how we act, Lord. Lord, give us that strength, give us that mercy, Lord, and enable us to carry the city of Castroville forward in the midst of all of this, this struggle that would been, has been put forth and obviously by no good love life, Satan. And Lord, we bring this to your throne of grace in the name of Jesus Christ, our one and only Savior, and all of God's people joyfully say, amen.
Thank you, Father. And I will dismiss myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item is citizens' comments. Uh, anybody that'd like to speak, please, uh, get up, state your name and your address. No? All right, great. Next item is consent agenda. We have the minutes for July 20th, 2021 Town Hall meeting, the minutes for July 27th, 2021 regularly, or excuse me, special called council meeting, and then the minutes for July 27th, 2021 regularly called council meeting. Uh, do I have a motion?
I mean, we approve the consent agenda.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sorry, who said second to that? Todd. He was drowned out a little.
Sorry. That was God again.
Next item is, uh, number seven, the public hearing. This is the first public hearing on the proposed tax rate for FY 2022.
And I do have some slides that I thought we'd go through since this is a public portion to talk about the tax rate. But I need to get, put them on the jump drive. No, this is working fine, I just, uh, I forgot, I had them on, I was working on my PC instead of putting them on Teams. And so they're on my PC and they, the shortcut to my PC from this that I was on.
Okay. Do we need to take a recess or can we just wait?
No, we're.
No, we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, we gotta open the public.
Now we're gonna open it.
Well, that'd be nice, right? All right.
Stopped you.
Well, we'll wait till he gets back up there.
Might wanna speak or they wanna watch. Then speak.
All right, well, let's open, then let's open the public hearing at, uh, 5:06. Uh, do we have anybody that wants to speak about the, uh, the tax rate? Okay.
Crickets.
Crickets? Crickets can't talk, they don't whether.
You could talk, right?
All right, we'll just wait for, uh, Scott. It's funnier when they're not ducks.
Maybe you do have some ducks there.
I do, well, these are kinda old.
Only one more serving.
Really? You better watch out, one of these guys gonna pull a gun.
That way, yeah.
Under attack. Under attack. Come arrest this man.
I wasn't told I was needing to bring my dog with me. He defended me.
Let him drag him around behind leg, huh?
Hey, he's allowed to carry.
Your dog is? You got an open carry for your dog?
There's no law that says a dog cannot carry. So my husband and son decided to take a picture of him with his vest on. My sweet puppy. Ain't my sweet puppy, what are you talking about? The mayor's throwing his things. His pockets.
My little white tantrums.
We opened the public hearing, nobody wants to talk.
Well, I thought, whether someone wants to talk or not, if we wanna go with the tax, some of the tax information, specifically not the budget information, but just tax.
Yep.
Then we would do that. What's that? Yeah, absolutely. This is typically what I've done in the past. I'll make sure it works. Can you see, can you see out there? Okay, good.
You guys need the lights off? Would that help?
F5. Yeah, I wanna do presentation mode.
It's in bounds right there.
I know that. Oh, there we go, that's what I'm, this is exactly what I want, okay. I want to ensure that it goes into where I can see that. Okay. So what we're having right now is the first of two public, public tax hearings. Neither of these are required by law, uh, at this stage because we aren't proposing exceeding the maximum rate that you can adopt, uh, without going to, to an election of some kind. Uh, our budget thankfully does not require that and, you know, as I've stated during the budget process, the goal all along was try and adopt a, a budget that, um, was neutral, did not exceed, revenues did not exceed expenditures, et cetera, and vice versa. So we've, we've done that, that's what's been proposed, but as part of this discussion, we've had a lot of discussion about, well, what is the maximum rate we could adopt? And if we adopted a, a rate higher than what the general fund needed to operate, that would free up some debt service use. Now, we cannot go and adopt a rate that, um, we can't adopt rate based on debt we're going to issue. It has to be based on debt we already issued, that's what sets the tax rate. So even though, um, we haven't issued any, we haven't talked to any bond counsel or, or anybody else about issuing debt and setting any figures, because of the debt the city has issued in the past, some of that debt is eligible to be paid for out of the general fund. So we have a certain amount of debt that's eligible to be, to be paid for out of general fund currently, it's already been issued. We've been paying most of that debt outside the general fund, uh, through utilities, because most of the projects were utilities related, were utilities related. However, the way they were issued, the general fund could pay, pay it out. So that's where this rate comes from. That's where the, the delta comes from. You've seen these slides before, this is, I think, the third or fourth time. In the upper left-hand side, that's our O and M rate. Uh, this is our current rate. In the middle, uh, on the lower right-hand side, that's our tax rate, uh, for INS. So that's our interest and sinking, our debt service is three cents. And in the middle is the total rate, that's, that's what makes up the total rate, it's point four nine five. So that's what our taxpayers currently pay and that's based on a total assessed property valuation, valuation of writing corner of 224 million, 147,073 dollars. As we've talked about before, when values go up, it doesn't mean that the, the, the rate automatically goes up or stays the same. That's what the, the elected officials, is what this body here decides, is what to do about the tax rate. And depending on what you do, it has implications. So if we raise the rate, for instance, higher than what, well, we talked about a minute, minute ago, we're gonna talk about in a little bit as far as the actual numbers, well, it has to go to voters for them to approve. Uh, but in the state of Texas, we're allowed kind of a threshold to work with them. And INS is treated somewhat separately. So INS, which is that interest and sinking, that debt service, uh, that rate can be whatever it needs to be to pay the debt. Now, there are, there is legislation that has been considered and I'm not sure if we're still having another legislative session or if that's actually completely done now. I think there's, the government's still trying, so. So, uh, so there may be still some opportunity for some additional legislation to affect how the INS portion of the rate is treated. In the past, it's been, you know, sacred, it's, we, it's, whatever that amount is that, that needs to pay that debt, there's no law that can prohibit the, the, the amount, or the total amount, uh, of debt issued, because it's all been approved by elected officials or in the general election. Well, now they're saying, well, but if it's certain kind of, the type of legislation that's been submitted is, well, if it's certain kind of debts for certain types of projects, maybe that kinda stuff, we're gonna make, we're not, we're gonna count that towards the part of the rate that actually does get voted on or that can throw you into the threshold where it would need to be voted on. And I know this is a confusing topic, so if I, if, if we need to clarify some of those points even further, let me know, but, um, just to let you know, there, there, the way this is, this is the way this currently operates, but there's legislation out there, out there that may change it. So our current, I talked about our current cert, uh, certified taxable value, our proposed, uh, tax revenue is at 1,051,679. That's what's in the current proposed budget, the updated current proposed budget, it's that amount. Um, and that's based on the new certified value of 240 million, 70,532 dollars. So that's an increase of about 15 million, almost 16 million dollars in value, or about seven percent, which is not bad. I mean, it's not, not stellar, but that's not bad to see a seven percent increase in values. Now, a lot that's coming from land and we know what's driving up the value largely, it's people, mostly this is residential, by the way, so we haven't had, yet seen major manufacturing in the city, it's not that kinda thing, it's not commercial. Mostly residential properties are going up in value. And of course, the commercial, the, the value of the commercial properties are going up, there's not any commercials necessarily being added. So what is that rate, if we did nothing, this is kind of what I'm trying to demonstrate here, is the do nothing tax rate. That's if we, if we kept things the way they are, we just continued to pay the amount of debt service that's traditionally been paid for through, uh, the interest and sinking fund. That rate is that very bottom rate, it'd be point zero two six four. Um, and the operations and maintenance rate would be point four three eight zero seven one. Now, the proposed budget and everything that staff has talked to this, to the council about, has been about leaving that rate alone, the point four three eight. So no matter what we do, uh, staff is recommending that we leave that at point four three eight zero seven one. Cause that's all that we need for O and M. And we've managed the budget in such a way that, that we're gonna be fine leaving that rate alone this year. What we're looking at is, well, how can we create additional ability to go and issue debt and do some projects? And that's what, that's what I wanna talk about during this public, this tax rate, uh, public hearing. So this is kind of a demonstration, a visual demonstration of the do nothing tax rate. Again, you see those same numbers, upper left-hand side, that's the O and M rate, lower right-hand side, that would be the INS rate, uh, that's roughly point one two six four. And in the middle is, is what the total tax rate would look like. So what are our options? Again, do nothing, leave it as it is, we wouldn't do new projects, uh, there'd be no major improvements, we're about to look at a, just a short list with ballpark numbers, that kinda thing. We wouldn't be able to do any of that. We basically just cash flow. And you do, the good news is, is the city, you do have quite a bit of cash. You have several million dollars, at least two million dollars that you can spend that are not obligated. In addition to those two million dollars, we're gonna get another 372,000 or so this year, and then again, next year from the COVID money that, it'll be designated for specific purposes, but truthfully, depending on what the council directs staff to do with that money, there are, there are ways to make it go into the general fund and be spent just like any other money in the general fund. If you have to, you have to, uh, there's a process to do that, like anything else. It can also be used for infrastructure, it can be used for, uh, broadband, and just a, a list of different things that it possibly can be used for. I'm waiting to get additional information, some of that information's already been shared with you on your SharePoint. So anytime I get information, I think there's two presentations out there about the ARPA funds and I created an ARPA funds folder, I believe. So if you haven't gone to look at that, go look at that, that's the American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act or whatever funds. So back to tax rate. The option number two would be preserve what I'm calling the historic tax rate. I'm calling it that because not too long ago, a couple, two, three years ago, the rate, the total rate was at point five two three three. And so, and, and it's a little bit more, um, digestible if you're, if you're, if you're a capable resident, I think, just on some level, that was a rate that we used to pay. No, I don't, no one likes paying more taxes, but it's not like we're going hog wild, we're just gonna go back to what is the, what our historic rate was, as if we had never lowered it, we'll go to there, right? Now, the ceiling is not very far above the point five two three three, so if you're willing to go that far, you can make the argument, well, we'll go just a little further. But, uh, that, that would produce roughly five cents or two and a half million dollars in investment. And it would raise, uh, the option number three is to raise the rate to accommodate the large, an even larger investment. And just what I read it earlier before, the INS portion does not count towards the rollback. But the maximum allowable rate would be point five three eight one. So five three eight one is, is, is the absolute max. That's what's depicted on this, this next visual. So again, upper left, same O and M rate, not changing that. Lower right, you have some question marks by INS, cause it really just matters, how many pennies do you want? But depending on how many pennies we put towards that, we can adopt a rate anywhere between what was that, uh, do nothing rate of point four six yada yada and some other rate higher than that. Uh, this is just an idea of the, uh, revenue that would be generated. So at point five two three three, you're generating new revenue of about 204,000 dollars a year to pay debt. Now, keep in mind, I said earlier, we can't actually establish a rate on anything we're about to issue, it's based on issues we've already done. That's what's setting these maximum rates is because we, we have, we only have so much that we've already issued that's, that's eligible to be funded. Uh, so that's where we're giving this maximum rate for. If you went to the point five three eight one, it wouldn't have generated that much additional money, it's about 35,000 dollars additional. And in the right-hand column, those are conservative numbers of how much we could go and borrow, between 2.8 and 3.3 million, uh, depending on what the market is doing at the time that, that you borrow those funds. This is just kind of a look at what the tax rate impact would be. So you see the, uh, do nothing rate at the top and then that point five two three three in the middle, and then the point five three eight one at the bottom. And that's just a per hundred thousand, and again, it's kinda simple math, cause it's, it's, the number is 100,000, so you're dividing by, uh, basically 100. And you get your point, you get what the actual impact is. But you can see on a per month basis, it's five bucks, uh, to the, for a hundred thousand. And granted, if you have a 500,000 dollar home, that's 25 dollars a month, right? And additional taxes to the city. This is just kinda, again, a depiction of what the available, your options are. It's anywhere in that zone. Uh, the floor is gonna be the, kinda do nothing rate at point four six six, and then the top is gonna be that maximum allowable based on what we've already issued, and that's at point five three eight one. Tonight, so I, I will go through this too. Tonight, so I will go through this too. But tonight, what your job, what our role is, is to adopt the mag, the rate that we won't go above. Is that tonight? I wonder if we do that?
We already did that.
We already did that.
Okay. And we did, we do 5, .5381, is that what we're gonna go with?
Right.
So, yeah, I apologize. So that, so that rate that y'all adopted for last meeting, that .538, that's the maximum rate we can adopt. And now, we really, you know, not only would it have to go to the voters, but you've already said we're not gonna exceed that. And I apologize. You've seen this slide before. This just kind of breaks down, okay, so we're talking about a rate that's over 50 cents. Well, who else is over 50 cents in Bear County or Medina County? Well, Medina County, over half is already over 50 cents, and you can see that. You get to half pretty quickly, because there's only seven cities, or, yeah, seven. So it's not hard to get there. And of course, we were knocking on the door at .495 of 50. And there's a, I'm gonna need glasses too. Honda is right there too. They're at 49 and a half, more or less. So at 50 cents, there's a lot of people hovering around that range. And then when you get over to Bear County, there is a whole lot of folks. Roughly a third of Bear County is over 50 cents, and again, you all seen this before. So this just kind of gives you a look at what the, those tax rates are again. Again, this is, breaks it out by maintenance and operation, INS, and then gives you the totals. That's how those totals are made up. So the last slide, we looked at the total rate. This is your M and L and your INS. And you see, we're at 3 cents. La Crosse doesn't have any INS at all. Honda, is that right, 30 cents?
That's the school.
That's the school district, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Honda, yeah, yeah, yeah. City of Honda, 11 cents, 11 and a half, roughly.
Devine?
Yeah, City of Devine, zero. City of Natalia, zero, they haven't done any issuing debt. City of Lytle has issued 6 cents, 6 and 1/2 cents. So it ranges, and generally, if you drive through a city, you can kind of tell whether or not you're investing in the community. It's whether or not they issue debt is sometimes pretty apparent, unfortunately. This is just, another kind of look at this for the benefit of the public and for you all as well, is kind of what would be the impact on an average homeowner? So in Castroville, and this just shows the average home values in Medina County by city. But you can see that Castroville has the highest median or average home value. And you can see that it's from 16 to 2020, so currently, our average value is around $203,000. So earlier, I was talking about per 100,000. I mean, on average, you really need to double that number. So I said it's about $5 a month, if you went to the 52 cent rate, or $6 a month. It's about $12 a month to the average household if you adopted that maximum rate, just to put it in perspective. This is just a breakdown of all the different taxing entities in the county that taxable residents pay. And I took that, that average home value, and I just wanted to show you all, and again, the public, this is how your tax bill breaks out. If you happen to be the one person who has a home that's valued exactly at that by the appraisal district, and that's what you're paying based on, because you don't have any, any of those exemptions or anything else that lowers it, or maybe that's what they lowered it to. Well, then here's what you're paying. So to the city of Castroville, you're paying about $1,000 a year. So think about everything you get. It's policing, streets, parks, all of that, it's green. It's what's costing you if you live in an average valued home. That's what the city's collecting for you to pay, to provide all the services. And then here's all the other, you know, taxing entities. And obviously, school district is generally, almost always the most expensive. That's true all across the state. Most of your tax bill is gonna go to the school district, and the rest of it's gonna be divided up between all those different entities. And you see, it's, you know, 20 bucks here, $200 there, $1,000, it depends on what it is. But I like this type of a graphic, because I think it really, one conveys, we aren't the only taxing entity. Sometimes cities will, you know, man, my taxes are hard, but really, we only make up, you know, less than, we're basically 20% of the tax bill, of this tax bill.
Of this, yeah.
Right? So, you know, just understand that 80% of those taxes are going somewhere else. We are not getting those. And that, most people know that, but some, it just helps to see it sometimes, be reminded of it. Oh, yeah. So, and the other thing, the other takeaway of this is, obviously, I can't, we can't control what these other entities are going to do with their tax rates for the year. I do not know. I don't have, I've been listening to their boards, I've been kind of busy preparing for ours. But if they should leave theirs alone, the only part of your rate is gonna change, is that, that less than 20% part of the bill, that's just that city portion, and it's gonna change by no more than about 12 bucks a month for this person, right? Okay. And I don't wanna be, and I know there are people on fixed incomes and other things, and we're gonna talk about those next. This is the exemptions, so I just wanted to, again, make you all aware of all the exemptions. And I apologize, it's a little hard to read. This will be on the SharePoint, so you can look at it there as well. The SharePoint, for anybody listening or watching, is a, basically a website where we're hosting documents for the city council. They're public documents, they are, although the site's not public, it's only accessible to the council. Everything that is shared in a public venue is a public record and accessible and through the city secretary. You just have to make a request to Deborah Howe and request what was shown. And we're legally obligated to share with you, so just be aware of that. So this just gives you a list of all the different exemptions that are available, and how they're applied, and what the, whether they're mandatory or not. Sorry. This gives you a list of the exemptions that the various cities and school districts have. And I'm not 100% this is accurate. No, it's accurate for us. We have, it's $10,000 exemption on, on the value of the homes. So all that means is, if your home appraised at $152,000, 10,000 is taken right off the top. Then it drops to 142. That's what that 10,000 means. It doesn't mean you have to reduce your taxes by $10,000, because as we already saw, most people will pay $10,000 in taxes. Most people say pay well under that. And then the freeze is a free, it actually freezes a value, whether it's related to disability or to over 65. When a person applies, when they own their own home, and they reach that ripe age of 65, which is looking younger and younger every day for me, they can apply, they have to fill out a basically form and apply with the appraisal district for an exemption. When they get that exemption awarded to them, it freezes their taxes in that year they turn 65. It freezes the rate and the amount, so that they're frozen. And it does not mean that if that same retiree, or whoever they are, makes a bunch of improvements to the home, that those are all free. Any improvement that they make, so the existing, whether it goes up in value, doesn't matter. If it freezes at a value of $200,000, even if the assessed value goes up to a million, they are only taxed on $200,000, because they're frozen. Now, if they go in and add a pool, and a second story, and a big garage on the back, and those things have some value at some point in time, when those are added, the year that they're added in, they get added to total value to freeze. They get frozen again, because they're still over 65, but they have to pay taxes on that in that year. And then beyond that year, that sets the new maximum freeze amount. Does that make sense? That's the way freezes are treated. I think we had had some debate about that in the past. So we have both the freeze, both freezes and exemptions for over 65 and disabled.
And we're the only city in Medina County that has the freeze? Is that?
I'm not 100% positive of that.
You weren't able to verify that?
Well, I thought I had, but then I saw that, this slide a few minutes ago, still didn't have a freeze for us. But I know we have a freeze, I looked at the numbers. So I'm not one hundred percent positive that some of these other cities may not have freezes either.
That's interesting, though. Cool.
So what this is, by the way, all this data that we're looking through right now, this is all provided in a report from the appraisal district, right? From the appraisal district. So you can go to their website and pull down some of these reports. It's public information. So this is just how the Disabled Veteran Exemption works. It's based on disability rating. It gets kind of complicated. But based on the percentage of disability, you get classified as 1, 2, 3, 4, or, well, 1, 2, 3, or 4, or they're 100%. Excuse me. And then the amount of the exemption ranges from 5,000 to 12,000, or 100% exempt, if you're 100% unemployed. And that's, this is established by state law. It's not something the county did, it's not something the city did. State law mandates this.
It's good.
Okay. And that's, I'm sorry, that's kind of what this was showing you. It's who the entity is that gets to establish that, and how it gets established. Some of it's by mandatory, by the state, right? So we went, we went over this one before, capital funding. When we talk about capital funding, it's, the general fund capital projects are tax-supported. That's where this INS rate, we're talking about tonight, comes from. Debt service, or I'm sorry, the utility fund pays for it through their ratepayers and through their ratemaking process. So when they need to do major capital projects, whether it's a sewer plant, or major improvements to water and sewer lines, those have to be capitalized and paid for through the rate. The rate needs to be set in such a way that they can go issue debt when needed, and borrow funds when needed, and do the projects, and keep the system operating at a level that we set, that the council kind of establishes. This is what we deem an acceptable level. Now, some of that is actually also dictated by the other agencies, state agencies like TCQ and the EPA. And there's, depending on what types of issues you're having as a utility system, there are governing bodies that may say, you don't have a choice. You need to make this investment, or you're gonna have a lot of very nasty things happen. So both can pay debt service with fund out balance reserves. All I'm doing is pointing out here, and I've said this before, we have substantial reserves in the general fund. So if we were to go issue debt in the short term, for instance, we're gonna look at a list of projects. Let's just pretend that the council said, you know, there are like $15 million worth of projects we need to do. And we need to, we need to start paying those now, and we don't want to wait to issue that. You could, it's not very advisable, you could go issue that debt, because you have enough money in cash to support that debt service for a few years. So some combination of that is certainly doable. You could do, you could, for instance, adopt a tax rate, a final tax rate, that creates some of those pennies in the INS debt service portion. We have up to 10 cents. If you might adopt the full 10, there's 10 pennies. But let's say that you wanted really to issue 25 pennies worth of debt. Well, that other 15 pennies, the idea would be, we'd go issue that, pay for it with debts, with our fund balance, and through some of that INS rate. And then in the future years, we would need to up our tax rate gradually to pay for that debt. Again, this is not a recommendation I'm making, I'm just making you aware of the options, okay? So you have a lot of cash, and that cash can be used for one-time purchases, which isn't really advisable. Or it can be used for funding major projects, which again, tears it down, but then it's gone, once it's gone. Or it could be used to help pay for debt service in the long term. And then other sources, you know, I never want to forget about the fact that, you know, when we bring these projects, when there's different opportunities to do capital projects for the city, or the benefit of the citizens, we're always looking, not just at the ratepayers or the taxpayers, we're also looking to the private sector, you know, where, where are there other people that could benefit from this project that might be, also be able to help pay for it? And that's where, you know, stuff like Alsatian Oaks comes in. They're paying a tremendous amount for public improvements, not all of which benefit only their development. A lot of, well, a good portion of those, those improvements are going to benefit the entire town. So things like the elevated tower tank that's in phase two, that's a pretty significant investment for the city. We're putting that on the backs of the developer. And granted, we're paying them back over time. We're using our own money to pay them over the long term, but they're taking the immediate risk right now to build that infrastructure. That benefits the city through a pressure plane and another source of water, right?
And actually, if I could clarify on that, it's not, so we're repaying them out of the taxes that are generated from their development specifically.
Correct.
So it's not the existing homeowners, the existing businesses that are paying for that repayment. It's the new payment, or the new development that's paying for itself.
That's absolutely correct. And that's the purpose of that turge that is being brought up, so, is to be exact. Thank you for clarifying. And I may be getting, I want to make sure, we do have a capital portion, right? We're gonna talk about capital?
Yes.
Yeah, number nine.
That's the next item, yeah.
So I, I think I've really, when I, when I finished this slide, I'm really done with the tax portion and the tax public hearing portion. The rest of this, we can talk about under capital if you want.
Okay.
But I kind of wanted to give.
Sounds good. Okay. Did anybody have any questions about that? I think that we've gone over this a few different times. I appreciate the way that you put this together. It, it just makes it absolutely clear, so, good job on that.
I think you have someone in the audience that might be able to speak.
Uh-huh.
We've got a question in the audience?
Yeah, please. Please. Will you stand up to the microphone, please? Please state your name and-
Michael Iltrus, 510 Washington Street, Castroville, Texas.
Thank you.
Question for you. I didn't see, or maybe I missed it, but that was excellent presentation. But where does the sales tax generation fit into this equation? I'd like to see the whole equation of, you know, property tax is one part of the equation. Sales tax, what, is that not pertinent to this here? I mean, is, we don't even consider that in the overall equation or not?
Well, no, we, we do, so that was covered in another one of the budget workshops. This agenda item was specifically on the tax rate.
Well, I mean, where, where was the results of that that was covered? I mean, I didn't see it in here, you know, if it's gonna generate this much, or what are we doing to enhance and increase sales tax revenue generation so that we can ease the burden on the citizen taxpayer out here? Is, do we have, I don't know what the answer is to that. I've been asked that question over and over. And, you know, one of the cities that's missing on here, it's kind of humorous, but is Von Armi. You didn't mention Von Armi on there. You know what the tax rate is over there?
Where's Von?
535, right outside of San Antonio.
But they're not Medina County, right?
They're not Medina County.
Yeah, I only have Medina County.
Von Armi's got a zero property tax rate for the citizens. They took advantage of 53, a quick question, a quick little bit of information. They took advantage when they looped 35 around the town there. And they selectively, you know, they got a bunch of brains together, selectively put in some businesses there that generated high sales tax revenue. And it was so successful that they dropped the property tax, citizens' property tax to zero. So what are we doing here in that regard, working for the citizen taxpayers to get this property tax rate down and enhance the sales tax revenue generation? That's the question I've got. I haven't-
I'm trying to decide whether we can answer that question in this meeting. And my city secretary's thinking ahead, no. But let me speak in just general terms. During the budget-making process, sales tax was definitely taken into consideration. Over and over, what we're presenting during the tax, this tax hearing, is that the O and M rate, the rate that would be adopted, if, even if we don't raise taxes-
Well, I understand, I understand all that.
Hasn't changed.
Right.
So that O and M rate, we are not raising property taxes for that purpose. And part of the reason for that, it's the only way I can tie in maybe the sales tax especially, is simply that we are having good sales tax, we have had improvements in sales tax, and that minimizes our need to raise property taxes, which is why we aren't raising the O and M rate at all. What we're discussing tonight in the tax public hearing is whether or not this body, the elected officials, and the community at large want to make investments into the community by going and issuing new debt and paying for that debt through the property tax. That's kind of neither here nor there with sales tax. Sales taxes rarely get utilized.
But where does sales tax fit into the equation here? I don't, see, that's what I don't understand.
Yeah, they don't. Not in this, this is, not in the scope of this discussion.
No, the overall scope.
Right.
The overall scope is what I'm asking.
We, we just can't, because we have to stick to the agenda items. By law, we can't go into that. We have gone into it in previous meetings. We can probably find some of that information and point you to this.
I'd love to see that. So I mean, to, you know, from my own head of-
I think, I think it's a good information.
I can try and answer it. There is a budget item later, lower down, city secretary's 22. So when we get to that item, I'll try to, try my best to cover some of that.
All right.
I may have to pull up a different presentation.
All right, appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to, oh, gotta close the public, thank you. We're gonna close the public hearing at, what is it, 5:40? Thank you. You want these? All right, so the, let's see, where are we? Number eight. Okay, so this is, consider and take action on canceling the regularly scheduled council meetings for October 12th, November 23rd, and December 28th. Did you want to talk about that, or you want me to-
I'll just mention, October 12th, the reason I'm, we're requesting that is I'm gonna be out, and that's gonna be right after the, you know, the budget, the actual, we're trying to get the budget and everything else taken care of prior to my, leaving, going on vacation. So that's why I'm asking for that. And then the other two, you know, it's Thanksgiving and Christmas, so it's, I understand that's something we do here typically.
Right.
It's typical that we don't, that we skip those, yeah?
Yeah.
We do. We cancel those regularly. The other one also, TML is involved with that too, on, besides your vacation. The other one also, TML is involved there too, on the subject of vacation. Okay, some of them are going, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, TML's the week, that's another issue, is that preparing for that, TML's the week before, it's Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I think that's reasonable. Do I have a motion on that?
I'm making a motion. We canceled October 12th, November 23rd, and December 28th, 2021, regular scheduled council meetings.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is discussion on proposed FY 2022 general fund, utility fund, special funds, and capital improvement projects and service level adjustments.
All right. So Mayor, I've got the rest of the presentation for this. What I'd like to do is let's get through these slides and then end of that, I'll try to pull up the, one of the prior presentations, maybe the first budget presentation that looks at sales tax and talks about inflation and that kind of stuff.
Perfect.
It won't get to all of his answer. I think one of his questions was simply, you know, what are we doing to maximize and improve sales taxes? I think a lot has to do with the efforts that we're doing through development and working with developers, but it's hard to quantify that for us, for the public.
Yep.
That's a, increasing sales tax is a long-term project. It's established in the EDC tonight, we'll talk about that. That's part of that effort.
There you go. Perfect.
Okay. So we already talked about this, kind of how do we, where does capital funding come from typically? So when you're going to do a major project, and we talked about this last time a little bit, I don't have a slide that specifically has these words on it, but one of the reasons that you issue debt to pay for projects is in part an equity issue, because we know that populations change over time. People move, they do, they sell their homes, they die unfortunately, they move, whatever. The population changes and the rate payers and taxpayers change. So when you have an asset like a street or a building or something else, it's not just about whether or not you can afford it. If we were made money and had that much money, we're going to afford everything that we feel like the constituents, the community really want to see invested in, even if we had all the cash in the bank to pay for all those, which we don't, but even if we did, paying for them all out of pocket would not be fair or equitable in some ways, because you're putting all of that on the backs of whoever helped put that money in the bank in the first place. Whereas when you issue debt over the life of a project, projects, if you've got a 35-year building, you might issue 25-year debt for that building, a 30-year debt. That makes sure that everybody who benefits from the use of that building over that time period helps pay that debt service through the tax rate. So that's one of the reasons why we do it. Other reasons is simple because, you know, we know the current value of money, so current dollars are worth more than future dollars. So you always want to be very careful in how you spend your current dollars, like you can only spend them once. I think we went over this, I don't remember, but so this, still using the same math, more or less, this is a conservative number, but for every million dollars, million dollars that you borrow, you're going to pay about $72,000 a year in debt service. That's on a 20-year note. Again, these are conservative. We'll see what the actual, if we go and issue debt, if the city takes that step and we go to the market, we'll see what the market does. But this is a pretty conservative. So that means that one penny of property tax, so for every penny that we assess, it's about $24,000 or 3 cents per million dollars issued. Okay, so we've talked about that before. So here's just a list. These numbers are section two of these, very round, okay? Really just conceptual. So please don't get wrapped around the axle on the amounts. The whole concept was, okay, if we're going to go issue $3 million of debt, what are we spending that $3 million of debt on? And so what I did was I just looked at our Parks Master Plan and some of the other, looked at some of the other items that we discussed and put some round figures to it, just to give you an idea. Like, these are things that we can invest in, in the city, and that's part of this survey that's ongoing. So anybody who hasn't taken the survey yet, please take the survey. It's available on our city website. It takes about 10 minutes to complete. Please complete all of it. It is very simple and easy to use. But that survey data is going to help us understand maybe where the mindset is of the people who take the survey and what they'd like to see us invest in. But these are the types of things, so again, no particular order. The first, the first page is just facilities, streets miscellaneous, the next page is really kind of park-centric. So on this page, library improvements, just miscellaneous, I mean, all kinds of things. I have a few items actually identified, but there's probably more we could do at the library, whether it's a pergola out back or walking paths or more space or what have you. But $75,000 doesn't go very far as far as actually making true improvements to the building. City hall restoration, I put it like 1.6. That's been a number that's been floating around in the past. What that would do is completely refinish and restore all the places that have issues, whether it's the leaking windows, the leaking walls, the leaking roof, the damaged walls, that kind of stuff. Re-plastering, yeah, again, just kind of general concepts. A downtown thoroughfare, very ballpark number, but the idea there is if you wanted to do some kind of tourist-centric, pedestrian-friendly revamp of Fiorella and then, you know, see how far that money went. We could look at, get it engineered, see what that would look like, get it designed, spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to put a plan together and then start funding that plan, right? A new police station. We know that our current police station is good for its size today, but at some point we may look at doing that. There's just kind of a ballpark. See, again, target of the home, Steinbach improvements, new animal facility, we're not going to talk about that in a minute where we're at. Sorry. And then this is, Steinbach, I repeated, this is parks. So now, these are from the Parks Master Plan, so you've got the regional park, Lions Park, Houston Square, September Square, public pool improvements, and then the community complex. And I didn't, I threw out a number of 16 million, but I honestly, we haven't had enough discussion about what types of things and how we would stage that. But the point is, there's a lot more than $3 million, right, that we could do, depending on what types of projects we want to do. I think I've said this before, you could get a lot done in parks for a million dollars. I mean, you can do a lot of improvements in parks for a million dollars. What we're talking about, if you, if you did that max rate, that 10 cents, that'd get you a little over three, probably three and a half million to spend. So what would you do with the other two and a half? Well, that goes back to those facilities. Is there other types of improvements? One of the things that your constituents are saying, constituents are saying they really wish they had. Again, that survey will tell us some of that, but this was just to get the ideas, kind of just get the wheels turning. So this is the proposed budget. I just wanted to show you kind of what changed. So this was the original that I brought to you. I cannot, I can barely read the number, 3,339,500, I believe.
I think you lost your headers.
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry. So what those, yeah, I did. So what those are, that's, that's actual expenditures for all those years, and then the adopted is the second column from the right, and the last column on the right is the proposed. So those, that's what those budgets are. Yeah, you're right. Sorry about that. So those should have, those should have years at the top. I believe that 16, 17, 18, 19, actual... No, I don't think that's average. I don't have average numbers in here.
The current is, it's like to the left, then it's an actual proposed.
Okay. For real. Oh, yeah, current, 20, current. Actual proposed. But bottom line, the difference is from what we talked about at the meeting, at the prior meetings and this meeting, the thing that's changed is the total amount, and you'll see it went from 3,39...
3,958.
3,9...
580.
Okay. Yes, 3,958 to 3,417,003. So it went up very slightly. That was to take care of these things we already talked about, the ADP that got left out, adding longevity, which is fairly minor expense, the retirement match that we discussed. So adding those things, the total amount change in the general fund was 77,000. Those revenues, so this was the original revenue amount, and now it's this, you know, obviously they're equal. What changed? Well, we upped the sales tax estimate just a tad. We upped the property tax now that we have the actual official amount that we would be able to get. We've got that for that, for that rate that I talked about earlier. And then we upped the transfer in and other revenues slightly from where they were. Oh, wait. Yeah, yeah. Slightly from there. So those were, where the changes were. Again, we only had to find $77,000, and amongst those lines, it wasn't very difficult to do. So sales tax, there is 53,000, property tax, 11,000, other revenues by eight, and then the utility transfer went up by about 5,000. What that transfer will be going forward is a three, and we talked about this before, in lieu of a, just a amorphous transfer every year, they're paying direct costs, the utility system is, of whatever in the general fund pertains to their system operations. So that's not part of the finance department, part of HR, part of the software costs. They're paying those directly. And then we charge the utilities a 3.5% franchise fee. And that's a very standard, when we get into the rate analysis with our consultant, this is what he'll talk about and this is what he'll recommend. So I already have some of that information from, which is why I'm plugging it in, but when we get to the point where we're actually having this conversation with the council, he'll kind of explain more of the process, the thought process, who does it, why they do it that way, et cetera. But that's a pretty standard practice of charging kind of a base franchise fee.
So with the franchise fees that we get from, like, from CPS, from other entities that are on our pools, does that go into the utility fund or into the general, maybe just directly into the general fund?
Okay, let's go to the general fund. But we're, and now we're charging ourselves a franchise fee. So where we charge, you know, all those other companies a franchise fee, we're charging our utilities a franchise fee. And just by comparison, again, it's $254,000 compared to the amorphous 850 or whatever it was. Now granted, their direct share of their cost is like 397, 400, in that range, it's about $400,000. So the total is like 650, but they were transferring 800, 850, 900, depending on the year, y'all remember looking at that slide. So we've actually gone down a little bit. That's going to help our utilities when we start talking about our rate-making, and I kind of alluded to this before, I wasn't sure where it was all going to shake out. Well, the way it's shaking out is kind of what I kind of suspected was that they were overpaying us a little bit. Not a lot, but a little bit, a couple hundred grand. Couple hundred thousand dollars, that means that your rates don't have to go up as high if they do go up. It doesn't put as much upward pressure, and it also means that there's some ability in there to go and issue debt, just like we have some ability here to issue some debt, they have some ability there to issue some debt.
Well, and I like the way that you're approaching that, because like, if you look at what we're charging franchise fees for CPS, it's 5.5%, I think we decided on, for this, it's, it's actually less. So it's not burdening us as utility payers for us as taxpayers?
And I want to be quick, yeah. I didn't, it's not my idea, I wish I could take credit, but, you know, I'm relying on our consultant, Schneider Engineering, who's doing that rate study, and this is what they've recommended already. And I just, I'd ask for it kind of early because I need to know it for the, for our budget. And they...
When are we going to get that?
The rate study? Now, when are we going to have that?
Pretty soon, I, pretty soon, like, it might be on, I don't want to promise, but it might be on the 24th meeting. It's either going to be then or the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Technically, probably going to be ready by tonight, but we're still gathering, I'm still having them guys, I'd rather have it...
I think you got your preliminary...
No, they're not in scrutiny, I've gotten, I really want to make sure that we're presenting, we've fleshed out very well.
Thank you.
Okay. So one of those proposed increases. So then, in the same budget, or the same item, is these SLAs, the service level adjustments. One of the things we talked about the last meeting was the asphalt zipper, laser grader attachment. That was the, for the streets projects, to do them in-house. And then we also talked about 2% retirement match. Again, I folded that in, I kind of listened to your feedback, and please let me know if that's not something y'all want to do. I've got it baked into the budget right now, that's where part of that 77,000 came from. I can go back and show you the actual amount. It was $26,000 of that 77,000 is the retirement match. And that, to be clear, that's not automatic. It is, we had our opener on the stage with our employees, I did tell them that this might be coming, it was not a definite, but if it came, it would be optional. So they have the option of participating. If they participate, the city then would be, and this is the maximum amount based on our current payroll that we'd have to pay. So we went over these different projects. We had a lot of questions about the asphalt zipper. I know we went out and had a demo between the last meeting and today. There's been more discussion. I've tasked Devin with preparing a proposal, just to kind of look over all these items. And I really wanted him to be here to answer these questions because he's been having one-on-one conversations with the cities that currently use the asphalt zipper in other places. He's talked to Larry Sitter, he's talked to, you know, other contractors that are better understandable, how would this impact us? So I wanted us to be prepared to have that discussion. That said, almost everything we're presenting on, well, everything we're presenting on the streets isn't necessarily an S, it started out being an SLA for the next budget, because that's normally how I do things. But truthfully, we have so much fund balance reserve right now, and we're about to add another $700,000, $800,000 from this year. When they, when we close the books with the utility system on September 30th, they will make a transfer to the city. And that transfer is, right now, it's like $780,000 or somewhere around there. So that's money that's added on top of the other fund balance we're talking about. So my point is, some of these things could be cash-funded and wouldn't impact the budget, the proposed budget at all. It just depends on how quickly you want to move on and what you want to do. I don't want to put y'all to worry up there.
When will we be able to discuss the possibility of doing drainage improvements as a service level adjustment in addition to O and M? Putting in more people? When will that discussion take?
So that, now's the time to do that.
Right. Right now.
Right now. Now, now the concern I have about that, the only concern I have really is, when we're looking at the budget itself, I squeeze different areas to get the things that we talked about poked in, but depending on the cost of adding additional person, et cetera, we may get to the point where we're going to have to fund balance it this year, and you're going to look at a tax increase next year to support that position. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because we're, we're at, like I said, that O and M rate we're at, that's the highest O and M rate we can adopt. I mean, that's our ceiling for O and M. INS has 10 cents. O and M, we can't go up anymore without having to roll back. And I need to calculate what that would be, but I believe it's that rate that I showed you. I'm pretty sure that's the highest.
I don't really know where to start, but if I get out of line, you'll tell me, I'm sure. I'm talking about in general the Athens-Algeir Street drainage problem when we have storms. We all know what it is, and we all know it's been there a long time, and we've tried to And we've tried to do a few Band-Aids, which I compliment the staff for what they've done, and I think we've made some improvements. I know we've made some improvements because I go down there and watch it every time we have a heavy rainstorm. But after listening to Mr. King discuss his assessment, which he's not here to give tonight, but if you don't mind, I'll just summarize.
Please.
What Mr. King said, because he and I both read, and I'm sure the other members studied, the drainage study that the city paid for back in two thousand and two or two thousand and four. There were five projects, four of them were completed by the city, and the one remaining one that wasn't completed was the Athens area drainage problem. And in there, in that study, it recommended some simple, no, I shouldn't say simple, some less expensive, reasonable approaches that wouldn't require us to dig up big utilities and spend millions of dollars. And it was generally discussing simpler solutions like culverts. Culverts are not that expensive to build, and you don't have to displace utilities normally. What you have to displace is driveways and put drains underneath them and put a culvert on the side of the road. The goal is to move the water faster to the river and prevent it from going across the property. Now, Mr. King went and did a study himself. I actually passed him in my truck, I was out there at the same time. And looked, he looked very closely at the Athens area, and he recommended two things. One of them I already had recommended, and several of us have discussed, but we haven't done it yet. But the two things he recommended were improving the water flow that's moving off the hilltop, and it's moving west, and it comes down the hill and on to Florence Street at Athens. And then it moves down Florence Street to the, to the east and is supposed to continue eastward to Constantinople and drain, and some of it's supposed to drain down Algiers, and some of it's supposed to drain down Athens. Originally, the city had a culvert on the south side of Florence Street. And it, over the years, it's, it's been filling in with silt, grass has grown. Several homeowners have put in driveways where they plugged up and just filled it with dirt or asphalt to make a driveway. He recommended that we restore that culvert to its original state. And the few driveways that had been built, we put in a pipe underneath them and replaced the soil, and the driveway could then be replaced on top. And he said, by doing that, which sounds to me like a possible O and M project, if we had service level agreement or increase to provide the personnel, maybe that could be done. I haven't heard from the city staff. That's the first solution. And that would, that would take the water that's now flooding the residents and move it down to Algiers or Constantinople where it would go to the river. The second relatively non-complex solution is, I think, also can be done in-house. There's a fifteen-foot utility easement behind the homes on Lisbon Street between Algiers and Athens. That utility easement allows water to flow that's come down the hill, it allows it to flow over to Algier Street and down to the river. Again, that area, over the years, has filled in with silt. It's raised up, and it doesn't allow water to flow. Mr. King and I both agree that if we took a blade and we bladed that fifteen-foot utility easement with a deeper edge on the north side, so it created a little trench on the north side of the easement, water that flows down would go down into that trench, and it would flow down to Algier Street and down the Algier Street to the river, and much, if not most, of the water that adversely affects those four home lots would go down to the river. Again, that seems like a project that maybe could be done with a service level adjustment, or we give another person to the street department. I'm assuming we have the equipment to blade some dirt, but I'm not sure.
There's a, so what we put together, it may be advantageous at this point to have Devin walk through the program that's on asphalt and this other, that one of the last slides is about personnel and kind of how we would use personnel if that were added to the equation in addition to the equipment.
Well, really, the issue is, do you or anybody have an opinion on whether doing it in-house is a reasonable option? Or should it be a capital project where we outsource it and pay somebody to do it? That's, I guess that's really the question.
I think it, I think Algiers has already got enough water load on it. I mean, if you're talking about diverting some more water to Algiers, my son had two inches of water in his garage.
He's on Athens.
He's on Athens and Lisbon.
Yeah, but Algiers is to the east of that, a block.
But I thought you wanted to put more water on Athens.
No, Algiers.
Oh, I see. I want to take it off Athens, move it down to Algiers, because Algiers flows very well to the river.
Right.
If you go down there and look at it in a heavy rain, it flows unimpeded to the river. And it could handle more water without impacting anybody adversely. So I'm taking, I'm suggesting move it off Athens by making it flow west, or eastward, and then down Algiers.
Well, and part of this equation is how you pay for everything and what it costs. So some of what we've discussed, I don't have costs on, so it's hard for me to advise you and say, well, this is what would make sense. I know that the things that we can do, you know, what, there's things that we can do within our scope, and there's equipment that we need, and it's like Dennis prepared it to address some of this. So he can answer some of those questions, but there was another aspect to this, and that is, I'm separating out mentally for myself and hopefully for you all, there is a need for streets repair and streets. And the cheaper option, and I think the better option, is for us to do as much as we can in-house with that street repair and with what is fairly inexpensive equipment. When you look at what the county spends on their types of stuff, we're looking at, you know, less than four-hundred-thousand dollars total investment to do those, do this type of stuff. Now, we just had a dump truck go out this week, so.
Oh goodness.
It's, and it's, anyway, it's a nine-thousand-dollar dump truck that we bought used with some miles on it and years on it, and it's like a ten-thousand-dollar repair. So we're going to have to make a new dump truck, more likely. But that type of stuff happens, it's not, I'm not adding that to the equation, I'm just saying that there's other things, other equipment we're going to have to get that we had, but now it's going. So.
Well, I think that, I think what we should do with this, I would say, kind of the main theme that I'm hearing, both from citizens and from council, is we need to do work on streets, we need to do work on drainage, we need to come with a solid plan on, that includes personnel, that includes the equipment. I want to be really careful about any of the money that we're spending on the equipment. We have too many stories of people, us, Casterville, previously, buying stuff, selling stuff. So I want to make sure that we have the plan down solid, vetted out with our experts that we, that we work with, and that includes Larry from the county, that includes Phil, he's got that expertise as well.
Well, we've, so we've done some of that, and that's what this presentation is about. So with your indulgence, I want to do the presentation, and if some of this isn't answered in the presentation, we'll answer it later.
I'm wanting to see the presentation.
Okay, cool.
We, we did do a review of the drainage in the area between Athens, Florence Street, Algiers, all that, last year. And the engineers came back and were saying our options are millions and millions and millions, or millions, millions, millions.
Yeah, but since then, we've had Phil go in and look at it as a council member, and he's gone back and looked at a prior report, and he thinks that with, at least some of those issues should be greatly alleviated with minimal investment, not millions and millions, so. And that's the thing is, we could, as I keep reminding myself, this town's been around for a little while, right? A few years. So we don't have to fix, your road wasn't built today, we don't have to fix it today, we don't have to rebuild it. But we should be making efforts, you know, taking steps in the right direction. I think the, just the culture that I sense from the community is, yeah, you're actually right, we don't want to go out, spend a bunch of money, either with the contractor or on equipment, and, you know, have it not work the way we intend it to work. So I think the smart thing is baby steps, and I hope that's kind of what we're presenting. Really, it is a baby step program. We're not recommending buying a two-million-dollar maintainer, right? Do you, can we go ahead and start with this? Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Can you make our roads look like that? See, you're just teasing us with that.
During this presentation, these are the main bullet points that we're going to try to address.
Would it be easier if I take this to you?
No, I have it. So we're, all this information that I brought to you, I mean, I've spoke to dozens of cities, counties, organizations, trying to figure out what they do, what they, where they made mistakes, where we can try to avoid those mistakes, and then also what possibly we can do to improve this. I'm sure all of y'all are aware, but you hear our streets are in bad disrepair, what can we do? So I reached out to cities that had spent millions of dollars and were still getting that feedback, not with doing an in-house program, and then checked with them on how they can improve. And they've turned around, within five years, the whole, you know, perspective of the streets. So, I mean, I can't give you, you know, all the results right now, but this is where this information comes from. This isn't in my opinion, this is results. So the first thing is just a breakdown of our current streets budget. As you can tell on there, personnel, forty-three percent. That includes, I'm split between Parks and Recreation and also Streets, and then my three guys. Street Supplies, you can see that is the third largest. And then, of course, Utilities, the electrical utilities on all the streetlights is paid out of the street department. So, which is pretty traditional on that matter. So other than that, contracted services, we, we tried to split our street. I want to explain what this, these items are used for, so the Street Supplies and Contracted Services. When we do street projects, a lot of that contracted services is put into the Street Supplies, just because most of our contracted services are done through the help of the county right now. That's where that money comes. And in previous years, it's been a little confusing because you'd had a bump where it's to eight-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollars in the general budget versus an O, versus a capital improvement. We've separated that, so now you can see capital improvement versus our general repair and maintenance and improvements.
We're splitting it out, so you can see cap, and we're making, we're actually going out and building new streets, it's going to capitalize. If it's just maintenance, pothole repair, that kind of thing, that's going to the general fund budget, so that's what's in there.
I like that.
So overall, we, I broke this down on square footage on the left, and then how much overall we spent. So on twenty-eighteen, we did the Chip Seal project in town. It was the large portion of Country Village and a few other streets around town. I put five-hundred thousand dollars because, plus, because there was a lot of things where it was spread out, and it was very hard to figure out overall with add-ons to the project where exactly the exact number was. But it's in that ballpark of half a million plus. And twenty, as you can tell on that one, we didn't use any county projects. County projects are marked in the teal color. In twenty-nineteen, we did zero capital improvement through contractors. We did do the improvement of Mexico Street down, that used to be like the worst street in the city down near the river. We completed that, forty-eight thousand dollars, that was contracted, and then also the use of material, with the help of the county, of course. And twenty-twenty, we did Alsease Avenue, that was twenty thousand dollars with the help of contractor Chester Maples and the county. Once again, with COVID and everything going on, and a lot of changes, we did not invest in any street projects through contractors. This year, we have twelve thousand dollars so far that we've spent on, well, that's projected for the total cost of Petersburg Improvement next to the school. We chose that road because it was a constant nightmare for buses and kids and a bunch of issues, and it also didn't have any utility improvements in the future in there. So that's why we chose that small road, plus the county had their hands full, so we didn't want to burden them with a larger project for this year. We did budget for the improvements of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the select list that y'all have seen in our street improvement diagram, a few in River Bluff, Tumbleweed, and a few other small areas in the city. That's roughly about eighty-four thousand square feet. And right now, we're projecting between a quarter of a million to about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars.
We budgeted a hundred and ninety, but the bids that we're getting back, or we're anticipating to get back, is going to be about a three percent increase.
Yeah, on, yes, on average, our contractors and engineer, well, other cities I've reached out, contractors, engineers, three to five percent, five percent on the high end. Most of them saw a ten to fifteen percent increase in material and contracted rates.
If you can even get it?
Yes, that is a problem.
Well, we talked about smaller projects, you have a trouble, it's difficult to get a bid when you're only spending, and it sounds like only, but for contractors, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project, there is. Use isn't worth the squeeze.
True.
So this is a graphic representation.
So I'm sure some of y'all have seen our street assessment, a few times, split up in different areas. This is the full overview of the city. I will tell you about fifteen percent since our evaluation was done. And early twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty has been, the remaining service life, which is the RSL, is decreasing. Zero, I mean, let's mark it in red, is stop, that's, you're getting to a point of complete failure. Yellow is your in-between, but, you know, with certain variables, you could definitely see a dramatic drop. Green, you're in your safe zone, you probably have less than ten years, five if you do zero preventative maintenance, and then, of course, the ten and twenty are marked in red. There is a few roads, oh, black, I'm sorry. There's a few roads in here that were missed by the GIS, so we're adding those in. But overall, this is the conditions of the roads. Zero to four is less than five years until failure. And when they refer to roads and failure, it means that at some point, it becomes so bad that you have to just get all the material out of there because water seeps in and gets below that material, and it's just like, your, your project costs go from, at a contractor standpoint, in a rehabilitation versus a complete redo of the road, forty to fifty dollars a square foot to sixty to seventy-five dollars a square foot. So it can, I mean, you're already talking about spending a ton of money on roads, but, you know, we wanted to break this down to show y'all overall where our roads are in condition. So what I'm presenting to you is an average of what most cities review their streets, and that's a five-ten street plan. As you can tell, we're looking at ten years out. The reason is, is five years, you should, overall, in five years, you should do half of your streets. And then in ten years, you do all of your streets, and then by the time ten years it comes around, if you've done your preventative maintenance and stuff, you're, you're not looking at, you know, doing, I mean, you could split it in half and only be looking at, you know, five percent of your streets a year, or two-point-five percent of your streets a year with good preventative maintenance and stuff. But overall, we looked at the whole entire street program, because most, I would say about eighty-five to ninety percent of our streets are less than ten years of service life available. A lot of that has to do with the conditions. Water is huge, and that's, you know, Scott talked to me about some of my edits on the presentation, and we're reevaluating these roads and water, did a number to us this year.
Now, we had some streets that were, they had, they were like in a six to eight range, and they're like three to four now. Just in the la, just this year with all the rain.
Last couple of months, yeah.
Some bottles have just appeared, I mean, they weren't there eight or twelve months ago, and now they're, now they're there, so.
So overall, we have twenty-four miles of streets. If you break that up into an annual, ten-year, annual contracted or in-house program, that's a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet. Most contractors use yards, I wanted to break it down like this so we could get into the specific numbers. So you'll see, I try to keep to a square foot throughout most of the presentation. So the next slide is a comparison based on all the information I've gotten from contractors, such as possible prices, and then compared that to what the county and local contractors do with us. So I got down to a square footage based on that number. So on here, it shows in twenty-twenty, if we were to do the hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand square feet, which would keep us on a plan where we could get to a point of not spending all this major money, contracted-wise, we would be looking at about four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And then it increases based on a three percent increase, you know, all the way up to twenty-six versus an in-house number of a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty. That includes equipment purchases, material. We would not be biting off the whole contracted thing. What we're doing is process A, or well, one, two, and three, and then utilizing a contractor to do number four, because that equipment for number four is very, very expensive, and it just made sense overall. So basically, what we're doing is, in our process overall, utilizing what we've seen that has worked with the county and taking over that responsibility and doing that in-house, so that that way we can finish streets faster and more efficiently.
Can we go back for just a second?
Yes.
So how many, so this is doing, these are the estimated costs for doing a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand.
Yes.
Square feet of road.
Yes, and that's broken down on what the current contracted cost is, that we've broken down per square foot for this year. And then also what it, I mean, we've done three con, or we've done three projects with the county over the last few years. So I was able to take those numbers and compare those and see how much increase has been. But this is the numbers that have come forward.
Well, you see, when you're spending more, sorry, when you're spending more with the contractor, you're going to be subject to inflation, and we put in a three to five percent increase every year for that. If you're only spending, if you're only having to pay for supplies yourself, and that's all you're paying for, you know, If you're only spending, if you're only having to pay for supplies yourself, and that's all you're paying for, you know, we're already seeing the labor is going to be there. We have, um, that's why you see that, yeah, it's got going up to the right in the blue bars. It's also going up to the right on the orange bars. The numbers are changing, but they're not changing nearly as much because it's a smaller amount of money, same percentage.
So what is the estimated per square foot by contractor versus the estimated square foot by in-house?
So, uh, uh, that's the next slide, but I will tell you, it's about three dollars and forty-three cents a square foot versus, and I had an equipment and material rate and then just a material rate. Because some places don't look at equipment because it's, um, an investment and that can be used, but we're not even, you know, half of that.
But that's it on the bottom of the left.
Yeah.
Square foot cost, a dollar seventy-eight for equip- employees in, uh, equipment?
Mm-hmm, yes.
What is that?
Uh, equipment and material.
And material, and then just the material is a little bit less than a dollar.
Yes.
Is what it would cost us if you didn't house her that question.
Go ahead, Er.
Could you go back to the slide just a little? That would be, we. You answered part of my question in what you said, but it raises the bigger question. You said we have three to five percent inflation is reflected in those teal charts. I understand that. But just a moment ago, you said, in this year, we're experiencing ten to fifteen. So why are we using ten to fifteen instead of?
We didn't want to be ridiculous. It does go up by ten to fifteen, but on average, it goes, is three to five. Right now, it's pretty bad, but, you know, when you're doing long-term projections, you don't want to, I didn't, we also didn't want to be accused of, you know, trying to blow out the number because that would make it look a lot worse. And it would, I mean, it very well could be that, but it's not normal. It's not normal if we go up by fifteen percent every year.
So that, what did you say, per foot? Less than a dollar?
That's right here. So the material cost alone is less than a dollar. Now, if you, if you put equipment and materials together, it's about a dollar seventy-eight. The contract cost is three forty-three.
And that, and that's also if we invest in our program and spend, you know, besides the asphalt chipper, none of these other equipment things are more, it's a one-time purchase. Of course, we'll take care of the equipment and utilize it, but, um.
This is what I was talking about, baby steps. You know, with most of that, when you look at the, the, the cost of the other equipment, it's pretty minimal. The grader, the water tank, it's like sixteen and. Sixteen thousand dollars, eight thousand. When we talk about doing stuff like, uh, on that, that block that you talked about between the utilities, a laser grader would be per- a perfect machine to be able to have that. It's not absolutely necessary. If you had, uh, someone come out, you'd have to pay them to do it, if someone come out and stake it, and you have a good operator, they can get the same grade by, by driving through the stakes, right, trying to eyeball it. But a laser grader does the same thing and you don't have to stake it. You just, you put in the information and it does it.
Well, so some of the questions that I had on here, um, I, I think that we do need to look at the equipment. If we're comparing apples to apples, we gotta, there you go.
Uh, we weren't done, just so you know, but keep going.
Okay.
I didn't mean to hit the button.
No, that's perfect. All right, go back. Well, I'll let you get into that.
Oh, I'm hitting wrong.
All right, so I won't talk about that. Um, on the equipment itself, um, I don't know that our, is our roller sufficient?
Yes, it is a, it's a twenty-six hundred weight, but it's a three thousand rated, uh, press. So that, by Tech dot standards, three thousand pounds is the minimum. So it's one of those equipment that, wh- when we do start seeing the success of this program, there is a few things that can make things easier and make things, uh, you know, that are compacted and stuff like that. It might take a fu- a couple more passes, but, you know, it's one of those things that, um.
Could we use a bigger one? Absolutely. What we have is the minimum standard.
You're still gonna, you're still gonna need a vibratory rotor. You got a zipper, you got a grader. I think that's a water truck, not a water tank?
No, it's a tank on a truck. We gotta pick, we got some pictures.
Okay, it's a water truck, then it ain't a water tank.
Yeah. I, I will tell you that most of the cities I've, I've spoke to, we have ten times the amount of equipment they have. I mean, we met with Kirby that bought a zipper and they have to rent every single piece of equipment, but they're still seeing, you know, ten times the, the return. But, uh, you know, bringing you this presentation, I wanted to show you what we have. We'll be able to make it work. I mean, some of them, if we need to look at other, uh, equipment investments, I mean, we can, or the county too, also, um, with getting an operator that's always on.
Yeah, we can get more, but, well, we want to think, uh, try to have a block before you run. I understand that. Because it doesn't end.
I'm, I'm being told numbers are different, that you can get some of this work contracted out, uh, for considerably less.
How much less?
Five thousand dollars for a mile, twenty foot wide.
Okay. That's a, that's a finished product?
Finished product.
Five thousand dollar, five dol- five thousand?
Five thousand dollars a day and they do a mile and twenty foot wide.
What's that bring, who's does it?
Dollar a foot.
Who does that?
I mean, if we're going like that, I'm, I'm not sure why we haven't done that in the past, but, I mean, no contractor that we had bid.
Confirmation on that.
That's all we've paid. So our history here, we saw the history from these slides, uh, that's what we've done. So if that was available, why didn't we do that? Why, why haven't we done that?
Where did we spend five hundred thousand dollars in Country Village?
No, that was on the, um.
Was that in Country Village?
That was actually citywide chip seal that was incredibly effective.
We shut it down.
Yeah, we didn't even complete it.
And we shut it down?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, because, and they didn't buy the right materials or anything like that.
I'm still picking up chip seal in my yard.
Yep.
Well, we've, so our, our effort and I'd be, trust me, if we can find someone to do it for a dollar square foot and it, and it meets your standard, we can, we can ball this up and throw it in the trash because what we're bringing to use would be a dollar minimum.
I love to do it ourselves.
But I don't know, I, I mean, when we reached out to contractors, that is not the pricing we're giving at all. Not even close. Like, it's more like four dollars a square foot.
No, on your price. Training.
Training's included. It's, uh, as much as you want, no charge.
But the asphalt zipper.
No charge? Wait a minute now.
Well, well, obviously.
Yeah, there, and.
Because there's got to be certain certifications and everything.
No, I'm talking about zip, just for the zipper. The zipper.
Don't we still need a rotor there? You don't have a rotor on that, on that.
Yeah, we have a roller already. That's what he was saying, is we've got a roller.
Vibratory rotor?
I don't believe Barnes vibratory, but that's the thing. Okay, so what we have, as we, you was answering earlier, we have the piece of equipment that Tech dot has, has deemed as the minimum standard for compaction. It's three thousand PSI, right? So our machine, the roller we have, is not a vibratory roller, it's just a plain old small roller. But for what we're getting, what we're proposing is a four-foot wide section, that like the, the zipper would do a four-foot at a time. So you would have to go over the roller, with, with the roller several times, more than likely. Whereas if you had a nice, big vibratory roller, it costs, I don't know, three-quarters of a, or a quarter of a million dollars or what. Yes, would it be nice to have? Sure. It'd also be nice to have a really big backhoe, a really big front-end loader, maybe even get a bigger zipper and just do the street in one pass. But once again, we're trying to do the walk before you run and, and make, not overinvest, and let's just get our feet wet. We can always, if we save so much money and you guys are so happy with this, first off, like the initial cost to get into it, we talked about this a second ago, and we didn't, we still have, this is all the, uh, that's the presentation that's left.
Where'd it go?
Long way. Yeah, I don't know why I was going out. Anyway, um, it's just the computer's catching up.
One thing too with the roller is with full-depth reclamation versus cutting out and replacing sections, the way that it works with the material and the stabilizer, a lot of that, you don't need as much compaction because you're, you're, you're mixing all the material and you're, uh, doing it a different way than just a, a, a top layer where you're having to compact it. The picture that he had just shown on, uh, here was how the cut is done and how the road fuses back together. And what the difference is, overall, on the far left, new asphalt sinks a lot, even with, um, the, uh, compaction machines and, uh, different ways of, uh, getting it, uh, installed versus using a reclamation and a stabilizer, you're, you're, you're not, you know, completely replacing the material. It's the same material that was there, just recycled.
So the fact that you're putting that, like Portland or some other stabilizer in, um, we're using Portland as an example, but there's, there's a lot of different stabilizers you can use. Yeah, you, you don't have, you're not trying to compact the full depth because you're getting a little bit of that just because it's being stabilized. It's being hardened, uh, through that process, but, um, again, kind of a walk before you can run. I would love to know that dollar. I'd like to, I'd really like to know who's quoting the dollar.
And, and then, so to make sure, one, that the roads are done right, and who's inspecting it? How much are we having to pay someone to inspect to make sure that it's a good road?
Well, so let's talk about that because this is, what we're looking at, part of the, the cost savings is not having these engineered, not spending a lot of money on engineering and inspection. We have, we are looking at, one of the open positions right now is an inspector position for the utilities. And it'll depend on what that person, if we're able to get someone, what experience they bring to the table, because we want to use that person to the best of ability. Our, the person that we do have, uh, as our streets foreman, has some experience, uh, in Tech dot and building streets. Again, part of this will be a learning process for our own staff. I want to be very upfront about that. But that's what, that's the beauty of this type of in-house program where you're not trying, we're not trying to be Tech dot. And we're not trying to even be the county. We're just trying to, and part of this goes back to, you know, he was talking about expecting life, but really and truly, it really depends on what is the standard of street that you want to see. And we had some discussion about that, and I know Phil's not here, but I'll just speak for him, you know. He was talking about, he kinda likes gravel roads. He kinda likes the, the historic aspect that a, that a, a lower, maybe tier road brings because it's more historic in his mind. I, I, I don't want to put words in the mouth, but that was why I was given to understand from the conversation. So truthfully, some of what staff needs to know is, what is our standard for roads in Castroville? Now, what I'm recommending is a chip seal standard. We, you know, and make potentially road base with gravel on what we're going to talk about, like paper streets and other areas where we want to have a dryable condition, but we're not looking to chip seal it. And, you know, we're, we're okay with going back and maintaining it with the, with a, uh, asphalt zipper and a, you know, doing that process, you can get a pretty good standard base that it, that stands up pretty well, even to rain and those, those types of events, without putting chip seal on top of it. It's not a road. It's not like, you know, a chip sealed road that, that's going to last you nine or ten years, but it will stand up a lot better than just regular dirt and gravel, right? So there, the point is, there's, there is a number of options that we can ease into. And it's not, the training, you know, we've already got the equipment offers, the equipment we have right now, the equipment we're talking about getting, there's, the training that, that would, that would be needed for that equipment, specifically to use that equipment, um, it's not a certification, it's just training from the supplier, and that's available to us for free. The, um, the, the training to operate the equipment, we already have. Our guys already have that training. So that's, that's the good news. And like I said, this is kind of a walk before you run. When you look at the total investment and the cost, you know, if, if we're nervous about spending two hundred thousand dollars to go out and just go buy one of these, well, then let's lease it. And we can give up that lease, we can walk away from that lease if we're not happy or we don't think it's really working out for us. And that cost is a lot lower. I mean, for less than a hundred thousand dollars, we can be in the streets business in Castroville fixing them. Now, I've heard from Larry, I didn't get to talk to him. Devin had had a conversation with him, I think, Mayor, you might have had a conversation with him.
Yeah.
His proposal, as I understand it, and again, I didn't talk to him directly, so I, I really intended and want to do that still, is that he's thinking, well, you don't need to buy this Castroville because we, the county, will come in and do all this for you. We'll just come in and maintain your roads. That's wonderful. The issue is, there's only four to six months out of the year that you can do roads. He has eight hundred to nine hundred miles of road that he has to maintain. And I haven't asked him this question, so I don't know what his answer would be, but I have some, I'm a skeptic. How is he and when is he going to prioritize Castroville? I work for Castroville. I work for the county, and they are fantastic. First off, they're fantastic. I love Larry Sitter. He has been such a help to this, this community, and I don't want to pass on that. But I also want to be realistic, and this is about us, him helping out. We're not giving up on the camp, the county helping us. Doing this program, the idea is they'd still be able to come and help us. They're contractors, and we could get them to, when they're getting rock and getting stuff laid down, we prep it and we work with the county to time it so that their streets are getting covered at the same time as our streets are getting covered. But to, to depend on them a hundred percent, that's also saying that we're going to depend on the county for that service level. And Larry, no offense, he's an elected official. He may not be there in two years. He may not, I mean, the new, his replacement may not have the same attitude towards street maintenance in Castroville as he does now.
That's when you do something on your own.
Right.
But you've got to ask him the question. What your concerns are, I think they're all good concerns.
And I haven't had enough to.
So the bottom line is that we need to get to that point where the, the investigation that you're doing right now is, is the exact right thing to do. We need to put together the plan and make those determinations. Um, this is great conversation because, uh, I mean, if we could get it contracted out for less, that's great. But I think that we just need to make sure that we continue on with this. Problem is, we don't have much time to actually set the budget for it, so.
Zero. The first year, we paid zero on the zipper because that's how much they stand behind it. So, I mean, ideally, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for these add-on equipments and by, you know, I mean, with my current staff, we can do it, like you've seen before. We can keep up with stuff when we have to jump around. But, I mean, you could be seeing a street getting done, well, we're coming to the end of the year for temperatures, but, um, I mean, four thousand square feet in a day.
Well, if we come up with the right solution, then I, I think that, um, the way that it's looking right now, we could have, I mean, it's going to take us time. It'll be years, but over the course of the next few years, we can start making a difference, making a big difference. Where I, I haven't seen really that much done in a number of years on our streets. This could actually help us get to that point if it works out properly. You're going through the right steps, you're doing the right investigation. Has Petersburg been, um, chip sealed yet?
It should have been completed today.
Okay.
I say should have because the county had other projects that they had pull off that were a higher priority, which also leads into what, you know, could be an issue.
They, they, they did the first layer.
Okay. I was going to say, if you.
I saw that when I was driving.
So if you've seen the way that it was before they did the chip seal, Devin actually walked me through this, and I, I, I liked this exploration. So if you look at, uh, what they did in the park over by the amphitheater, that was the first step. What that didn't do is that didn't grade it properly. Um, so it's still kind of rough and, and, and jumpy. What they did over at Petersburg is they did the same basic thing, but then they graded it properly, which is that piece of equipment that, that he was showing there. And then the final step of that is doing the chip seal, and that is over by the Baptist Church. That's what it looks like as a completed product.
So, but like when we have roads that need new base lane built, because we've got a few roads that are washed out, how are we going to do that? Because we, do we have the capability of doing the new base?
Yes.
Before we do in the new road correctly?
And that's, that's part of it, because what the zipper does is it, it just grinds it up.
Right, but I mean the base underneath it when it's washed out by water.
It really should be called a reclamer, but.
Yeah, and that's what you're doing. So you can use reclaimed product to do that. So if you don't have enough re- generally, in the products you have, uh, I, I don't know, like, can you give me an example of a street that's completely washed out like that?
Uh, all the roads in River Bluff, the canal drains underneath by roads. It seeps in, and the base is washed out. That's why we have such lips.
So that's a perfect example. I'm glad, glad you clarified, because there are some, like I went and walked Berlin. That's a street that barely has a top to it. Like there's, depending as Berlin, it's one of those two, it's one on the south side. It barely has any asphalt or whatever left, right? It's almost all cauleci that's there. In your case, yours is, that's a prime example of where a asphalt zipper would work, because you do have the base. What this does, it, it reclaims the top and uses that top, grinds it into the base, and then you use that rolling process along with the, the, whatever, um.
Laser grader. Oh, the emotional.
Stabilizer, whatever, whatever we use to stabilize that, you use that with a stabilizer, and then you roll the crap out of it to get the compaction, and then that's your base. And then you go over the top of that with new chip seal. Now, one of the issues we do have is that some of our streets have, we're going to, that's where, I mean, that's where you need a front-end motor and a dump truck, which we have. Uh, because in some cases, you're going to actually end up with too much base that is, because you don't want to raise the level of the street. And Tech dot is infamous for this. I've been in places where you're looking at something, you're like, they put a concrete ribbon next to this road? No, that's actually the top of the curb. They've overlaid it so many times that literally the road is now at the same level as what that, that curb was. It's just nuts, but I've seen it.
And see, we have the opposite. Our roads are beneath the curb.
But my point is, in the areas where it's, where it's appropriate, in some cases, you may not have enough base, in other cases, you're going to have too much. And, and we'd have to.
I just want to make sure, because I know a lot of citizens, when they hear chip seal, they automatically think of the nightmare that we had.
Right. The chip seal is a finish out of.
You know what I mean?
A step in the process.
They hear chip seal and they automatically think of the fiasco we had a couple of years ago.
Yeah, if you don't prepare the base and just chip seal over the top of, of, of mistakes, you have, uh, failures. So if you have a fielding road and then all you do is come in and do an overlay with top of it.
Lipstick on it.
All you have is, you know, rock and tar on top of a failed road.
Yeah, a hot mess.
What this process does is fix that. Now, I want, I do, did want to mention this because Devin and I had to talk about it, that as I went for a walk this morning, I went to Lions Park, and it occurred to me, you know, another use that this thing could be put to that I think would be really cool is people who are looking for trails throughout the city, this machine with that ability to create a trail basically from scratch. Like you could go in and, and carve, and in that case, there is a running, there's a track. But you could go in and completely reclaim that track, put in new, uh, put in base to solid, solidify it, so then you'd have a nice. base to solidify it, so then you'd have a nice, solid running surface that isn't washing out every time rains and then put a little bit of, um, granite, decomposed granite on top. So you end up with a finished product that you're spending, you're not having to put a ton of decomposed granite in and it's, and it's maintained. And I can see us doing that all over our parks, Lions and Regional and anywhere else that a trail could be used, because it's a four-foot wide machine that you didn't add this emulsifier or this-
And can that be done outside of the normal streets window?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, streets window, you can't do below 50 degrees due to the fact that a lot of the emulsion mix and stuff like that, but also in, in general, but there's a difference between, of course, walking trails and what, what is needed for compaction for, um, uh, roadways.
Yeah. I would like to see us practice though. We're going to need, our guys are going to need some practice.
Right.
And so we need to think about where are we going to practice, uh, because we don't want them doing River Bluff as their first project.
Right.
And I'm not picking on our guys.
But it doesn't, it doesn't take long. I mean, we had, we had two people that-
No, it says we got electrical going first with the River Bluff. Why do we want to do a, replace the roads when they're possibly could get rid of?
You could technically replace them like six times.
Yeah, but you see what I mean? If you're fixing their electrical, it makes no sense to do the roads first.
Councilman Dyer's question, um, back in drainage, uh, we can actually utilize the money with a laser grader to address the drainage issues with this piece of equipment. You can get a blade at Tractor Supply. This piece of equipment is cutting edge and what it does is it allows us to work with GIS with an engineers or with Brianna, um, and set the grade that we want on these areas and it will guide the machine so that in that way we can fix the drainages. You want a certain road done, we come in there, we get it compacted, ready to go and we come in there with that machine and get it. And, you know, that's the whole goal is that we can deal with-
I just want to be very careful.
I think you need a bigger machine than that.
Yeah, I just want to be very careful because what we're going to be doing, um, if, if the expectation is, so chip seal is the same standard that, that Tech Lot uses all over the great state of Texas. Most of our highways, the, the, like the 287s and the Highway 90s, a lot of those are not asphalt. Now, some of them are, a lot of them start with a chip seal base and they put asphalt on top after that base is well established, but there's an awful lot of them that are just chip sealed. They're exactly the same kind of road they're proposing here. However, they use multi-million dollar equipment, whether it's the big, big friggin' rollers and big-
Big motor grader.
They've got a lot and they got a, a $2 million grading machine. They've got a lot of technology out there. Ours will not ever be the same. It'll be close, but it's a little bit, I'm trying to use a, think of an analogy to be appropriate.
It's just a smaller machine.
Well, it's a little bit like clearing the snow with a snow shovel versus a snow blower. Uh, one's going to be a lot more efficient and you're probably going to end up with a lot more detailed end product, whereas someone using a shovel, you're going to tell that guy probably used a shovel to do this, right? Um, that's what these are going to, but they're going to be very good. I'm just going, I don't want you to think they're going to be bad, but they're, they're way better than what we have, but they're going to be as good. I wouldn't expect them to be as good as Tech Dot, even on our best.
It would just take you a little longer to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, you, like Devin said, you could probably peel it off just a little at a time.
The practice-
You can be able to peel it off in one pass like you could with a big machine.
It can go-
We need to do something with the days down there.
10 inches on one pass.
It's going to get in people's houses.
I want us to focus on streets for, I do want to talk about drainage, I'm not saying that, but I need an answer on streets. You were talking about a plan and how we've done, what I need to know is we presented this, um, we've done some vetting, we'll find out what we're taught sources for a dollar per square.
I'm going to try to get a number.
But I would like to know, like, the other pieces, absent, well, first off, no, no dollars upfront on the asphalt zipper. It is a $42,000 commitment. So at the end of the year, a year from now, we'd have to pay $42,000, but we get to use it for a year without any cost. And then once we pay that 42, we say, you know, we're done. We didn't really think this worked or we want a larger machine or, and then that could happen. We'd say, you know, we're ready to actually put, buy a bigger front-end loader, spend a couple hundred thousand dollars and we, depending on our level of satisfaction, there are different ways it could go. But I, I just want to know what's holding us up as a council for making this investment now? What is saying, what's in your mind, is there anything that's saying, hey, we don't want to pull the trigger for this? The reason I'm asking is, um, as I alluded to before, if I can do this without changing the next budget and putting that in there, I'd rather do that because I have, it's much easier to, to justify the cat, the use of fund balance. Remember I talked about earlier about not adopting a balance, a budget that doesn't balance? The only way we can budget to balance if we put this in next year's budget is with fund balance. We'd have to say, okay, we're going to use cash. I really don't like doing that, but we do it all the time. I just don't, I, I don't like starting out that way at the beginning of the year, we're going to use this money. It's much better, much preferable to wait until the end of the year, see how much money you have left over and say, okay, we're going to do these one-time projects with that money. And that's where we are right now. That's where we are today. We've got a bunch of one-time money that we're going to get. We have some we're already sitting on. Is there anything that's stopping you from saying, hey, let's go spend 25,000?
Well, that's my question.
Not 25,000.
40,000.
Well, okay, I'm thinking initially, we need to get that grader, the grader, the drainage. Uh, we need to get a, a walk.
To try it out for a year?
Yes.
I mean, are you just talking to the, the reclaimer? Or are we talking about everything?
The support equipment.
So all in, we're talking about a commitment of about-
Less than 100,000.
Yeah. But just-
And that's for all three of those machines that we're picturing?
Yeah.
Correct.
I would support that if we're talking about the lease as opposed to buying it in the front. I, I would support that based on what you told me.
I just want to make sure that we've got that plan in there solid because-
I'd like to see it work.
You know, what we did out of the park, that was just the first part. So we still, it's not just that that's going to be the investment, we've still got investment beyond that. So I want to take a look at, like, what do we assume our total square footage of, of uh, work that we're going to be doing over the course of the next year? What is that money actually going to be spent on? Um, like what's the, what's the end result out of that? And we track it to that. And if we can accomplish it so that we're replacing that, like if we can use this to get us to the point where we're doing the 127,000 square feet a, a year, is that right?
Uh-huh.
So if we can get it to that point, we can commit to getting that 127,000 for the budget that we're talking about, then I think that's a win. If we can't get to that point, then I, we just need to look at it a different way.
So our goal would be to start on this process. How far we get into it in the, in a year's time? Yeah, can we get to where we're actually doing that much? You've got a certain amount budgeted in supplies and I'm not prepared against that question except I remember, um, and I can go find that number, how much did we put in streets? But we basically, like I said, we took out the capitalized supplies and so there may not be quite enough money to do this without doing some kind of budget adjustment in mid-year, but you do have the cash, we could do a budget to keep the program going. But our idea would be to start that process, just as soon as we have the equipment to, especially right now during the summer, let's start working on this. Like I said, we'd probably be pretty careful and pick some roads that nobody drives on and they'd say, why are you doing that one first? Well, we want to make sure we got this process down. You all are happy with the result, right?
Well, in the parking lot here.
What's that?
Can you even get the equipment?
Yeah, I think he's already got some of it. He's asking about availability of the equipment.
The other equipment or the zipper?
Uh, yes. Well, zipper we know is available, but the other-
All of the equipment, yes. I got generic quotes on the other items, um, due to the fact that they're not specialized. Bobcat does have the ability to get us the attachment within, I think they said 90 days. So, um, but, you know.
That kind of puts us-
I almost said a curse word out loud in the council meeting. 90 days?
That puts us out of our window.
Well, that's-
Summer's gone.
Yes, well-
You're right.
It, that item was a, for sure, let's get it, um, this thing is one of those that once it's built, it's bought.
What, the grader?
So, the, the grader.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I will say I haven't said, hey, get me one. I said, what, can you give me a timeline of what's usually expected? Because I mean, I would figure we wouldn't get approved until October. I mean, if we wanted to get this now, yeah, I'm, I'm sure we can make it work.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I think that we need to have a plan.
Is there one available now or not?
There is availability, just not like at your local-
Okay.
Bobcat distribution, yes.
If they said yes tonight and we said, okay, we're going to go and buy one and I place an order, when would I have one?
This just says discussion.
Most of our specialized equipment, I would say less than 30 days from the point when we send our invoice.
So not many days. I just want to clarify, I'm not trying to be mean or anything. I just wanted to clarify to you guys here.
Don't let us have a-
But, but keep in mind, again, that's, that's just the position of staffing sometimes. We're out here talking about it, it's like, well, I don't know. Well, we can't tell the supplier, yes, we want it and they can't make us offer it. So we, but it sounds like less than 30 days we have here.
I think as long as we get a good, solid plan in here and it's vetted out and you look at what the cost is, what the, the impact of that cost is going to be, how much we can actually do, even if, and just like everything else, let's, let's conserve it, conservatively estimate it and figure out what, what the end result is going to look like. What I don't want is a repeat of what happened back in, what, 2018 with a very huge expenditure with a terrible plan.
Well, the big mistake is we contracted that out. Again, I think when you, anyway.
Yeah.
That won't happen, I can just tell you right now, that's not going to happen again.
Somebody that wasn't local.
Right. And that's just not going to happen again.
Right. So I think that as long as we come together with a solid plan, this is something that I think that we should move forward on as soon as we can get that plan together and present what are, um, how we're going to deal with it. I like the way that you're looking at the, the risk mitigation. A risk mitigation of, you know, it's a hundred grand, but it's not really even a hundred grand. It's really more like half of that.
Yeah. Not even that, it's more like 20. So it's 42 plus 25 at max, so it's around 80. So about 25 of us, which you, you would have the 16 grand and the eight grand immediately. Now, again, we have to go get another dump truck. That's not part of this discussion. It is some, it's a piece of equipment we need and we'd be needing for this project as well. And that could be depending on whether we find a used one.
That's the dump truck you're counting on, the one that's broke down?
Uh, it has no use for the street.
No, no, but we don't have a dump truck we can use for streets, or do we?
Uh, we have the small one, but I mean, it doesn't have, it's not used during the reclamation. I mean, yes, we will need one for the street department and the water department, but other than that-
What are you going to put the water down with?
It, it, I have two options with that piece of equipment.
On a trailer.
Yes, it's a water trailer with spray controllable arms that we've looked at just because a lot of the bigger ones-
Well, good, so we don't even have to wait on a dump truck. We're going to need to get one, but we don't, we don't have to worry.
Right.
That's good. So there was a question about staffing and Herb was asking earlier and I appreciate your patience as we kind of, I told, I did tell you, I think this is one of the last slides in this, it's next to last. That's the thank you's next.
So wait a minute now, let's go back to the dump truck. So we need a dump truck.
Yes.
But the dump truck that broke down was the one we need to use to do this?
No. That's what you were just explaining.
Oh.
We have a, the only thing that we would need, so we do have a smaller dump truck. If we have excess reclaimed material that needs to be hauled off somewhere.
Oh, okay.
We've got the ability to do that. Um, this process that we're laying out is so minimalistic, I was going to use a different term, but minimalistic that, I mean, it's so small scale that we could actually do, we can, we can lay the water down with what you saw before, which is-
A trailer.
A trailer. So we probably just do a trailer attack.
You don't have a water truck, you got a water tank.
Right. And for the small projects we're doing, that's fine. It, it means it's going to be slower. We're going to have to stop and fill that tank more often, I mean, but we're also doing smaller scale projects. We're not trying to rebuild Roman today. We're going to do, and, and that's what I'm saying, if we like the result, we can always go out and buy a water truck and buy, you know, we can increase our equipment as we see the results that we want and we, and we decide that the, the investment's justified.
Slide a tank on a dump truck?
You could do all sorts of things.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you could put it on a flatbed trailer, you could outfit, you could retrofit a flatbed.
It's not practical buying a trailer, but-
Yeah.
On a trailer, but-
But it would work for us. I mean, honestly, if it's a small scale-
10,000 versus a normal water truck is about 200,000.
Well-
If you buy new.
If you get used, yeah. I mean, um, Darren, you had asked like work-wise, based on, uh, the process of the reclamation and then the two days of finishing work, it's roughly about to do 127,000 square feet, if you've got 90 days.
How many?
90.
90 days.
That's non-stop, all three guys working, 90 days.
Which is not what we're in trying to.
No.
That's 24 miles, right?
No, no, sir. That's 127,000 square feet.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
And we wouldn't, you know, I mean, I talked to my guy who has worked this piece, an older piece of equipment in this, and it's roughly about a block is three days, two ready, four chip sealed. And that's packed, graded, reclamation, all of that.
Well, so my point is, let's figure out how much we can do with the, what did you call it? The reclamation machine? I hate calling it a zipper because it's not totally accurate. But for the reclamation machine, for this, for the chip seal afterward, I just want to make sure that we have that budgeted in for the estimated number of square feet that we're going to be able to accomplish during this budget cycle.
Well, no, you're not getting that. I might say why. Because that's all dependent on our staff, our staff levels and the other demands you put on our staff. I don't have an endless, so what I can tell you is if we make this investment, we will be able to go and do streets as and when we're able to do them, we'll be able to do walking paths. I don't want to commit to a certain number of miles tonight. We're going to try, the best I can do is tell you, we're going to try to implement that, that process, right? We're going to do our best to line up with that and we'll bring you the need, but actually laying out which streets and that kind of thing, if we're going to walk before we run.
I think if we just do an estimation of what we feel like we can accomplish.
Sure.
And it doesn't have, again, be really, really conservative about it. It doesn't have to have the 127,000 square feet if you don't feel like it could be. Let's figure out what we can commit to. And realistically, based on what we have, and then what you are, you're getting ready to talk about more personnel here, we just need to put it into the full plan of what we're committed to.
Yeah, I wanted Devin Curtis to just tell me what his thoughts were, because he put this together with kind of some, just some, just an idea. He can, the blue is what we currently have, right, Devin?
Yes.
And the red would be if we added someone, and the idea is that that's your streets group, and then there's this maintenance worker that's off doing maintenance, or I'm sorry, drainage, that's off doing drainage maintenance, not all year, most of the year. Because again, people are out, parks help streets, streets help parks. So the idea that we're going to have this group just doing streets nonstop is unrealistic. But we will be doing, we'll be dedicating quite a bit of time to it. And it really comes down to priorities. If we aren't putting a bunch of other tasks on and saying, well, we need these other special things done, they can get a lot done. But there is, I think you broke out, did you have that in here? What their time, how much time it's been on different projects?
I do have a breakdown on that. Just roadway mowing is about 75 hours for three guys straight.
75 hours a year?
No, that's 75 hours every two weeks.
Well, that's right now because we've got rain. Last year it was bone dry and they weren't mowing. So that's fluctuating. That's fluid.
Yes, and then also, you know, that comes down to all of our drainage easements and everything, which some roadways mowing, we do maintain multiple times during a month, even if it's dry, just because you've got weeds.
So I just wanted to clarify, again, I just want to be very realistic, set real life standards. We, and it's not shying away, we'll bring back what we think is realistic, we can accomplish. And the good news is, we aren't set up to make a motion on this tonight. This is an SLA discussion. Maybe while you're shaking your head over there. It's all SLA. It's all right. We're all good.
Just so we keep that.
We're noticed for it.
Jairs and stuff thrown on the list.
The delivery rate item would actually come back. That's why I was asking, how close are we? Because I want to bring this back next meeting for a decision. If you feel like we're close enough, if you just need a few more, we put together a plan and say, this is what we want to try and commit to. And here's maybe, we put our heads together, here's maybe some streets and projects that when we start at test areas and types of projects we might try to do to get our staff up to speed and really be able to show the community, this is what this thing can do. Now, one of the challenges is going to be getting the chip seal done. So the kind of part of the question is, we're just doing the base level. And the base level is what you can go see at the park right now. It's not chip sealed. It wasn't graded properly. If you graded properly, it'd look a little bit better than what the finished product is right now. And honestly, it was a demo, so we didn't spend as much time, we weren't as, you know, the guys were in there doing it, showing us how to do it, and we're in and out. If we were to redo that section, number one, I would put more Portland down and we would spend a lot more time. We would have gone over with the reclaim or several more times. We only went one pass in each direction. I would have probably recommended we make it loose two, but probably two to four passes to get that thing really good and mixed up, then go in and really water it down really well. And again, we watered with a hose that day, or no, it was a tank.
A little water hose.
Yeah, so it wasn't ideal. So we can do much better. But that's the finished product, more or less, that we'd end up with without chip sealing it. So the chip seal is going to have to be contracted out and we'll have to look at how we do that. So we'll bring that back and.
Where's that piece of road at the park?
It's right behind the amphitheater.
Oh, okay.
It's just a little torn up piece of, you can tell because there's no.
It was just there on Saturday. I didn't notice it.
It's in that turn. You go towards that turn, there's about, I'd say a 60-foot stretch of road that got torn up and redone.
And I'll tell you, you know, I was sitting, working out of the office over here when they were doing the road right here. It took them probably two days to mess that up with a backhoe and a front-end loader or a Bobcat. They did that in, how long was that, two hours?
Well, they had it all ground up within 35 minutes or something.
What took them two days specifically for that? They did it in less than an hour over here.
With minimal dust and.
Yeah, it's amazing, the cars next to it, I know that was one of my concerns, we're going to put Portland in that, Portland's real fine, but the car that was parked right next to it, I know you took pictures, had no dust on it. So I think part of it's just the way that machine, it didn't used to be this way. They've improved that machine. I didn't mention that to you all before. The machine that we're looking at is way better than the machine that I have had experience with. Even though the one I had was great, I was very happy with it. This one has better technology. One thing is they added tires. The other one didn't, it literally laid on the ground, so if the ground wasn't even, that's what you got. This one has tires, you're able to regulate the depth a lot better. It's able to keep everything inside and it's, they've made it to where it actually, the operator is out in front managing the machine. The guy in the truck is just giving it a little bit of horsepower to move it, and then the guy in front is actually steering it and directing it down the street, which is cool. That didn't used to be the case. So we're getting a better machine, we're not spending as much money as.
So this machine's got a drum that's got teeth on it, right? If it's reclaiming?
Yes.
How often, how long do those teeth are going to last on?
The teeth, it's about, I think you said, do you remember? I think it was three miles or something.
Yeah.
So it's like, you have to look at them every three miles of road you do, and they're like $17 a piece to replace as part of the maintenance cost. But that sounds, it sounds like a lot, but when you look at.
It is a lot.
Well, but when you look at the supply cost of, we got that built in.
Yeah.
And that's still the price, like, we built in those costs.
Three miles.
So you're looking at, but remember, we've only got 24 miles in the city. We're looking at doing 2.4 miles.
True.
So that's 2.4 miles a year. So you're looking at replacing that once a year.
Right. And it depends on the street too. It really depends on what you're tearing up. We do have some river rocks that can be pretty harmless teeth, but we don't have what a lot of other cities have, just concrete and asphalt, just some of the other things that are a lot more rough on this. All right, did you want to talk about this or were you?
I mean, basically, what we would do is utilize the two equipment operators for the repair and maintenance of the street like we're talking about right now. And that third street guy could be a half and half. I mean, he could be the gopher or whatever is needed and help out with the drainage because, you know, there's a lot of drainage things that you can't just do with one guy. So with this, we would add one guy, but we would also be able to split up the crews and really make them work. Because we've tried to do that this year with, in the past, we've had a rodeo equipment everywhere, now we have a trailer. So it really does cut down on, you know, time and lets us utilize the people to their full capacity instead of, you know.
Is that 53,000 for the red box coming out of FY21 budget or FY22?
No, it'd be 22.
It'd be next year.
Yeah, because we don't have that person today and we'd have to add that person. And again, I don't, I'd have to, we were left, I'd have to see if we can find 53,000 without doing anything crazy. But we can all, again, we've always used fund balance. We've got plenty of money in fund balance to fund that position this year with just fund balance. I don't like to do that, but that's, we have the money. I just.
Okay.
I support adding that guy.
Well, I've got to ask this question because everybody's saying that we can only do the zipper and everything during the summer, right?
During the winter, no, summer.
Something, but.
That's if you're doing streets, but I think you could use it year-round on.
But still, it's, so you have three individuals, road repair and maintenance, it's not a year-round thing. Really, right?
No. That's not true.
It's not a year-round thing?
No, that's not true. It is a year-round thing.
It's a year-round for eating up the road and laying it down.
We do pothole repair year-round.
I know you do that, that, but it doesn't require the whole machine.
Oh, no, no, yeah, the machine would only be, so the machine, but the machine could be used for other products in the off-season.
Right, but it wouldn't require all three individuals because you're not eating up and putting down the asphalt and Portland and all that.
I think your point is that.
I, I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, and sign repair.
Yeah.
I haven't seen them do a new sign in a while, and there are signs that need to be done. Tree trimming, that is not a year-round thing. So I.
It's mostly during the winter, which is when we.
Right, but it's not evolvable.
Oh, there's, I mean.
When I drive by there, there's two standing around doing nothing and only one working. So I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of problem with.
With the street crew?
Yeah.
Okay, I.
I've driven past them many times. Anyway.
Pause right there.
I want to make.
Each construction, you're going to have three people and that's a safety protocol.
Oh, and I understand that.
Well, but I.
I'm looking at.
Sheena, I take, I take offense to what you've just stated. I would never say that of the military, I wouldn't say that of any other profession. What you've just, you've just, and I know that you didn't intend this because I think I know you, I mean, you seem, you're not a mean person, but what you said directly insults our employees. And you've basically said they're lazy and not doing something.
I did not say they're lazy.
Well, but you said they're not working. They're just.
No, there's two people standing around, one person working.
Okay, you, all of them are there doing a job. Not all of those jobs requiring to hold a tool and actually move dirt or something else, but they are required. We do not, I would not send fewer than the people that we send today.
Then I think we need to say something to the citizens because I've had citizens come to me also and make the same observation.
I've heard it a lot, every city I work in, because citizens don't understand it. They just don't. They think, they drive by a hole and they say, well, gosh, there's three people. First off, you saw it in a moment in time as you're driving by. You didn't see that one of those people that's standing next to you was just down in that hole. We can't have a guy in a hole endlessly. They have to take breaks.
I know, they've got to have breaks.
It's needed.
Okay.
All right.
But where I'm saying is, is the street crew for using the zipper and that is a seasonal thing.
Yes.
Okay? So those individuals could be utilized to do the drainage, like one of them's already split up to do, right? So I'm just having a hard time having a dedicated drainage person when we have other bodies.
And I'm with you on that, again, we talked about this once before, and we talked about whether or not it was prudent to have a full-time drainage person. And I said the, basically the same argument you're making now. The reason that we even entertained the idea and the reason he brought it back as a cost is because you all discussed it and we're saying, well, this is what it would look like. But that's because there was concern that drainage is not being addressed in Castroville, that it's not being addressed adequately. We talked about, remember? You can have a person on drainage doing nothing but drainage year-round almost and occupy that person's time. And the other three people are doing things today. The reason the drainage isn't being done isn't because we're like, ah, that's not important. It's because we have to prioritize our time and right now, there isn't a lot of attention being put to drainage. And part of this, believe it or not, it has to do with labels. So our guys are streets and parks, there's not a specific drainage person, and I do think that matters on some level. So we could take one of the three people and say, you know what? The ones that we have existing, your role, whenever it's not any of these other things is drainage. We could just, so you have two streets people and a drainage person, and when there's a street project, they're all streets. And when they're not, these two people are trying to do what they do, and the third person might be focusing on drainage. I don't know if that's realistic, because again, what I said before, a lot of the projects we do, you need three people because of the number of operators that are involved or safety reasons.
And OSHA and all that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I know our workers bust their butts. I'm just saying, I cannot justify knowing that it's not a year-round thing they can do with the zipper and everything for another body.
So I get what you're saying with this. You're saying, basically, you don't want to bring on somebody for three months' worth of work that we're paying for 12 months, who's sitting around for nine months. Totally get it. If I look at two of the biggest issues when it comes to nonutility, two of our biggest issues, or our two biggest issues are streets and drainage. And we're not being able to get to those because we don't have the personnel, we don't have the equipment running all this time. So I was, if we can fit this within the budget and it makes sense, and you agree with the way that that, I mean, the way that we fund it, I think that this would be the greatest thing that we can do for the city is to start fixing our streets, start maintaining our drainage, get it back to a point where it's not flooding people's homes.
I just want to be clear, the drainage person is not, we're not saying it's essential. We can do the things we've talked about with the people we have. This would simply add that asset and that ability. And by the way, I mean, that also allows us to bifurcate the departments so that we have one crew, for instance, we bought that wood chipper, we could have one crew go out and chipping woods, two people, right? One in the truck, one in the, running the wood. And again, that's an OSHA thing, but I think two people can do that. So I don't want you to think, if we brought someone on, I promise you, they wouldn't be sitting there twiddling their thumbs. We have work for them to do and we would make sure that they get utilized, whether it's in streets or drainage 100% or even in, you know, tree trimming. We have park stuff that needs, that goes undone. I mean, there's a lot of work that can still be done. But this would be, the idea is that the purpose and emphasis would be on drainage, understanding that it would not be a position that does drainage 100% of the time. That's not what anybody does here. No one in parks does parks 100% of the time. No one in water does water 100% of the time. There's all of us kind of chip in and do different projects.
Well, then I recommend then you change it from a drainage maintenance worker to all four of them being streets slash drainage.
Sure.
Yeah.
That would be a wiser move. And that way, we can go to the citizens and say, hey, we've got all these people, streets and drainage.
I think you'd be.
I can't justify it. Yeah.
Well, again, we're not trying to hit home the concept.
But the stigmatism would be there of, okay, well, this person's just this, you know, how can they just do drainage and everything by themselves?
Honestly, I think we're splitting hairs with this. The fact is that we're doing streets and drainage.
In Devin's defense, this stuff didn't happen overnight.
Oh, no.
And I totally could support an extra worker. Call it what you may, right, Devin? But one guy can't go to Country Village and clean out drainages by himself. It's not, it's not something you're going to do with a shovel. It's going to take a Bobcat, it's going to take a crew to go over there and knock out a cul-de-sac or knock out an area. So I could totally support that.
And you see, you know, we added, we added staff to be able to support what we've been doing. And I've heard great things about what the streets department has been doing, just with that focus that Devin's had on that and getting the crews out there and doing that. I think that that is a positive thing.